We're going to call the Wednesday, September 5th, 2018, a Leary Board of Education meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, we call a roll.
Mr. Brubaker.
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Here.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Elick.
Here.
And Mr. Gebhardt.
Here. All present, would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have quite a crowd here tonight. Some quick introductions. To my far left is our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Her right is our Superintendent, Dr. Tom Jama. Our Senior Board Member, Mike Gebhardt. Our Board Vice President, Annie Karstoffen. I am Kevin Brubaker. To my right is Board Member Greg Elick. And to his right is Board Member Jim Bax. Dr. Jama?
Yes.
Board Member, discussion items.
Absolutely, Mr. President. I need to get a couple items from our Attorney, present to the Board.
How many wonders was Greg there?
As many as I want. Actually, this one's my own nickel here. They don't have some air conditioning now in Spring Valley.
So there's no schools in Spring Valley?
No, with the country.
Mr. President, we have a first resolution here with reference to the naming rights of the multi-sports complex through donations. And this one is the naming rights proceeding. This will be one, this will be two.
Do this one first?
Yeah.
Does Spencer burst it? All right, we have two resolutions to move on tonight. First one, I'll read the resolution. It is hereby resolved by the Leary City School District Board of Education, the Board, that one, the Board shall only grant naming rights to the Leary Multi-Sports Complex and any building, structure, roadway, area, portion, or location within the Leary Multi-Sports Complex to persons and entities providing financial sponsorship to the Board. Two, any naming rights to the Leary Multi-Sports Complex and any building, structure, roadway, area, portion, or location within the Multi-Sports Complex shall be granted at the sole discretion of the Board and under terms and conditions approved by the Board. It is found and determined that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this Board and in all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were adopted in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including ORC 121.22. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstoffen. Is there any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Motion carried. The second resolution, it is hereby resolved by the Leary City School District Board of Education, the Board, that one, the Board approves the naming rights agreement to be entered into with Mercy Health Regional Medical Center LLC for the naming rights to the football field at Ely Stadium, a copy of which is attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Two, the Board authorizes its President to execute the agreement on its behalf. And three, it is found and determined that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in open meetings of this Board and all deliberations of this Board, any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were adopted in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements, including the ORC 121.22. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Elick. Discussion?
Just real quick, Mr. President, I just want to say our consultant, I don't know, are they here that we hired?
Yes, they are.
I just want to say that I really appreciate how thorough those guys were. They did a wonderful job going out into the community, to many different organizations, and I appreciate the due diligence and the thoroughness there. I think they did a wonderful job uncovering all the possible stones out there and very happy with where we are today.
Any other discussion? Madam Treasurer, we call a roll.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Aye, motion carried. At this juncture, we're going to take, what did we say, 10?
What I can do is introduce them.
Yes. We're going to have an introduction of the folks from Mercy, and if you would also introduce our folks from Sportsburst.
Absolutely.
And then after those introductions, we'll take a 10-minute recess to enjoy some refreshments and thank our field sponsors. So, Dr. Jama?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. It is my privilege tonight to recognize and thank Mercy Health Medical Center for participating and becoming a member of the Pioneer Family. We cherish our relationships very strongly with the community as well as with parents and students. And we don't consider you a partner, we consider you now part of the Pioneer Family, which is some deep, deep-rooted history in the Leary City School District. I personally want to thank you for being professional, for being upfront, and always answering the questions necessary, working with us to work out this multi-year agreement. It's going to be awesome now to walk up to the new Multi-Sports Complex and have it see Mercy Field. It's going to be an awesome thing to witness. I'd like to introduce the members that are here tonight from Mercy Hospital. We have Ed Ole, who is the Chief Executive Officer. If you would please stand, Ed. I would like to recognize Ed Ruth, the Chief Financial Officer for Mercy Health. And Jonathan Favi, who is the spokesperson for Mercy Health. Also in this partnership, Mr. President, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize two of our family members as well. These are the gentlemen who work for Sponsorburst, to Mr. Elick, who graciously complimented them on doing such a wonderful job in gaining this partnership with Mercy. I'd like to have Larry Yeager please stand up. Larry is the president of Sponsorburst. And Vince Hoffman, his associate, who works with him daily. Now, I'm used to doing a lot of talking, and I love to talk, and I could talk all night about this partnership and where we're moving forward. There are going to be, I could say this after speaking to the CEO, him and I are basically on the same wavelength with where we're going to move in the direction with this sponsorship. And it's going to be much more than even the field at Ely Stadium. We're going to work on other areas that will include special services within our schools and within our community. So with that, I want to thank you again for joining the Pioneer Family. And at this time, if you would like to say something, Mr. Ole, please do so.
Is that you? I think they're both, are they both on?
Sit, stand.
That's all?
It's on.
Yeah, I think so. Either one.
We appreciate, Mr. Jama, the opportunity that the Board has provided us to begin this new relationship, sponsorship, if you will. We don't really look at it, we call it a sponsorship, but from the Mercy side, we don't look at it as a sponsorship. We look at it as a relationship with a phenomenal school district. And between us, we're going to be able to integrate in a novel way, I think, healthcare with education, ultimately for the good of the students. Because the healthier the students are, the better we know they're going to perform in the classroom. And we believe that we've got some ideas and some thoughts that we've already begun talking about. It's going to help us get there. So again, really, really look forward to this opportunity and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. President, I would like to call Amy Ford, please, who has a couple special presentations.
I would just like to reiterate Dr. Jama's excitement of our partnership with you and that you would admit.
This is a copy.
And very excited.
I could tell you, the first game against Avon Lake, we had several members of the Mercy team there that evening, as well as Dr. Anthony, who did a great job on the sidelines in making sure our student athletes were healthy.
Thank you. For the Board, you can continue wallpapering your favorite reels because you have the last game and now the first.
That's your office, brother.
I see Greg Elick's daughter. Dr. Jama, any other recognition, sir?
At this time, no, sir. I would suggest that we move into refreshments.
Okay, we'll move into refreshment time for about 10 minutes, and then we'll turn to the Board Duty. Thank you. Mr. Bax?
Yeah. Just a couple of things, Mr. President, on Community Foundation. We've got the endowment, the Leary City Schools Endowment Board, has a new fund that we've been informed of, and it's called the Helen Charms Schaefer Fund for Teachers. And it was established this last May. And what this is, is the donor requests that grants made from this fund support professional development for Leary City School District teachers. Professional development includes, but is not limited to, conferences, trainings, and sabbaticals. Specifically, the donor would like to support local, domestic, or international travel expenses. This is to include transportation, accommodations, and per diem. So that's kind of, we've never had a fund like that before, but the fund balance at this time is below the granting threshold, so it will be a while. But that is a new fund, that is a new fund for the Endowment Board. And secondly, we were approached, by email, I was approached today, this is also from the Community Foundation. And this is in reference to the Community Foundation Youth Fund. And it says, "We are seeking two students from each school district to serve on our youth fund. It is an awesome program, and is a great learning experience, and it looks great on college applications. Youth between the eighth and 12th grade meet one time a month between August and April. They plan service projects, learn about philanthropy at all levels, and most importantly, they make real decisions about where their grant dollars will be rewarded. They review grant proposals and attend site visits." So it is kind, it is just some experiences that students would have in that same activity that the Endowment Board goes through in terms of making grants to various service projects and whatnot. But we have one student, it says that we have one student already mentioned from Leary, we're looking for one more. And this is going to include pretty much every, looks like every school district in the county, or at least most of them. So we would be looking for one student, and they're actually hoping for a younger student, maybe even in the eighth grade, because that would give that student an opportunity to work all through high school with this particular program. So I will be sending some information out and to you, and you can distribute it, and we can come up with another student to fill this position. But it sounds really cool. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bax, Mr. Elick?
Just real quick, I'd like to thank Dr. Jama, Mr. Rigda, our C R A D, Heather is here, and everybody involved with pulling off the first game at the stadium. It was a wonderful event, it is a wonderful facility, and I'm so happy that everybody pitched in and helped us get this done. So great job to everybody.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just going to mention the stadium. Next time, why don't you start this way?
I'll go with the senior side.
I just want to say how great the stadium was. I was proud to walk under that new sign and get my picture taken with where it said "Pioneers". It was a lot of fun. And can't say enough about it. Rick on that parking.
Yeah, we're doing that.
Also, I went by Ely today, and I see there's all kinds of trucks going here and there, working. I just wondered what the teachers are thinking. I mean, is it noisy in there? It's got to be hot. The dirt's got to be coming in.
Absolutely, it's going to be very similar to the high school. In fact, it won't be as bad because the high school was being built, attached to the high school. But with this one, the building is going to be separated. There is going to be dirt, the staff, you know, even in my open video, I don't know if you saw that or not, where I thanked them for being patient over the next year and a half or two years, because in the end, it's going to be so, so well worth it. I know Dr. Devee, the building principal, put a wonderful plan in place to deal with transportation, to deal with kids in recess. They're having additional gangs brought in, so it's going to be handled properly, and it'll get done right.
Okay. Great, thank you. Onto Board Presentations, Middle School Athletic Program. Ms. Beck, Coach Arnold?
Look, they gave you cake.
Didn't have any stuff.
Yeah, three pieces.
You got three pieces.
Yeah.
Some of you may remember, in the end of the 2012-13 school year, we were tasked with making some reductions to the budget. Mr. Rigda and I had many conversations, went back and forth, and we didn't want to cut any program, because as you know, once you cut a program, it's very hard to bring it back. So at that time, the decision was made that, starting with the 13-14 school year, we would reduce the seventh-grade teams for football, volleyball, and basketball, which then ultimately left one team at each school where seventh and eighth graders were able to participate. So you had seventh graders playing at the eighth-grade level. That left some frustrated athletes. Mr. Brubaker, I know your son was involved in this, because he, I believe, would have been one of the first classes that affected. This year's seniors are the first students that played on that combined team. Our freshmen this year are one of the first groups where we then brought back the individual teams. The sophomore class right now, and I'm sure Coach Arnold can speak to this as well, you do see a little bit of a lapse in their abilities because of, you know, having that combined team, less playing time, less instructional time, things like that. With that being said, because of that, we have seen a decline in numbers at the middle school for sports, mostly in football. Basically, the last few years, you've had roughly 30 students at each of the middle schools, and that's a combination of both seventh and eighth-grade students. And for those of you that have been in the middle school lately, you know how little a seventh grader is. And to put them on the field against an eighth grader, they're like, whoa, wait a minute, don't think I want to do this. So that has hurt numbers, and we have seen that at the high school. Freshmen volleyball used to get roughly 60 to 70 girls trying out. Last year, they had 22. This year, we saw an increase of up to 28 freshmen. So that's where we're starting to rebound, because we did bring back seventh-grade sports. Coach Schaus has developed a youth program, which will help as well. And over the years, I'll be honest, I learned a little bit about middle school curriculum and the fact that I didn't realize there wasn't phys ed for sixth grade. So that's where a lot of these kids, if you had phys ed, they would be exposed to the sports, and they're not familiar with the sports. So the coaches at the high school are working to develop programs. As I said, Coach Schaus has hers. Boys' basketball has the luxury of being able to run Little Pioneers on Saturdays during his season, because they play on Tuesdays and Friday nights. Unfortunately, girls' basketball can't do that, because they have Saturday games at 11:00, 12:30, and two, or something like that. So there's ideas coming, they're just struggling to try to get things in place due to the schedules and also due to some of the facilities. And if you've been at the high school, you know how busy we are and how hard it is to get everyone in there. The other struggle we find is that there's no, not many multi-sport athletes anymore. Used to be, if you remember back in the days of the Verhoffs, they played both volleyball and basketball, but at the same time, they were also playing AAU basketball and JO volleyball. And due to the costs, our athletes don't do that. So Mr. Arnold here was tasked with the job of coming up with ways to increase participation at the middle schools, work with the high school coaches. As I said, we are starting to somewhat see a rebound, because we've put that seventh-grade sport element back in. But there's more things that can be done, so I'm going to let him speak to that.
Good. Good.
I'm not supposed to teach this teacher, because you're going to get pissed and I'll get attention.
This is a test?
No.
There'll be a test at the end.
Okay.
The answer's always C.
Okay, so what I did is I pulled us some things we focused on in the first year. And the first thing we did, one of the first things we did was we met with all the administration to combine seventh and eighth grade as one team across the board, so we had seventh and eighth graders for the first time competing as a team. I'll give you a quote from our coach after coaching two, two games. Coach McGeehan has been with us for several years, and it was seven years, six years, before we scored, actually scored, against Strongsville. We had never scored until this past year. That was not going into this year, it was last year. So Kirk, I asked him after he beat Vermillion 38 to nothing, and then beat Avon Lake 38 to six, or 36 to six, what was it like? I'm texting him, what was it like to coach? And he said, "Kids are feeling good. It changed how I coached right from the get-go. Last year, I wanted the ball to start the game and tried to run the clock out. Today, I deferred to the second half and had a ton of options to give the ball to." So that was one of the first things I saw, is that when I looked and watched a full year's worth of sports, I saw our kids in the talent as it spread, just be absolutely demoralized by score, having no self-confidence, and not wanting to come out to play. And I wouldn't either if I hadn't scored against Strongsville for six or seven years. So I just highlighted some ideas, things we, Heather and I have been working with and working on. Number one, we put the schools together, and we are seeing some success. There's a big difference between a seventh and eighth grader. A seventh grader competing against eighth graders, some of them never played, it's dangerous, quite frankly, and my coaches told me that last year as they were coaching, and I already knew that. But the eighth grade is now 2-0, and they've done very well. The seventh grade competed against Avon Lake, and they lost 12 to nothing. The first game they played against Parma was a combined team, and it is an exact, it's a great example of why we don't want seventh graders playing, because they're about a split of 12 and 12. So as a 12 and 12 team, they had 12 eighth graders, and they won pretty handily against kids. But we had to do that because we had cancellation. Football is a dying sport. It is a dying sport in middle schools. To give you an example of how dying it is, Strongsville's just 22 seventh graders. We're talking about Strongsville. They have 22 seventh graders. And they have about 35 eighth graders. That is an entire building, one building for Strongsville. So it's very, it's very difficult right now with numbers in general nationally. Thousands and thousands of athletes are not participating in youth football. Pop Warner is down thousands. So in order to get our kids to come out and play, combining teams is important on several levels. One of those levels would be, they're going to get the same fundamentals and be together from the seventh grade on. They're going to be taught the same way, and as they're taught the same way, they're together. Which is important, because when we get them as freshmen, when I served as a freshman coach in about '95, '96, 2003, we honestly were two years behind always, because there are three different systems being taught. This team is teaching wing T, this team is teaching eye formation, this team over here is doing something else. So it's the same principle as teaching math. If you're teaching Algebra I, same concept. You want to teach it across the board. As far as combining the teams, we have consistent teaching with position development, and also just the whole aspect of being together and calling themselves Leary. I think it's vitally important. And cross-country this year, another thing we worked on, the three teams, instead of sending eight athletes, I mean, that's what we would have, we'd send them in three locations. We'd have Eastern Heights going to Brunswick, we'd have, you know, we'd have somebody else going to Strongsville. We combined, they run a still separate unit. However, we're saving the district money by sending them on one bus to one location. So we redid the schedule, and then we also got some local events. So we're running at Brookside, running Open Door, which should also, with scheduling, if you can schedule some people throughout all of our schedules, that perhaps can give us some confidence, other than playing at GCC. The GCC is brutal. So we did that in addition, and coordinated a lot of things that Heather touched on. I don't have to go through every one of those, but you'll see that we, some of the payoff we're starting to see, like in volleyball. Jen's fourth year, I believe, at this time. She's gotten in there, and she's worked really hard with her youth athletes. In so doing, you're starting to see a payoff. Our girls are undefeated right now at the eighth-grade level at Eastern Heights and Northwood. They're good, if you get a chance to see them. I have seen them, and we also have some really good coaches there that are doing good work. Numbers are a little bit better in cross-country, and they're about the same in volleyball. Those sports have been a little bit more successful. In football, we're rated around 28 to 30 at middle school eighth. Then we have about 33, which is competitive within our league. She touched on boys' basketball, sometimes competitive. We talked about reasons why there. Brett does a great job with his league, and he's able to do that through the year. And that is a payoff, because we play in a league that consists of travel sports. Everybody in our league can pay to have their kids play. We may not be in that situation. Seventh and eighth-grade wrestling joined together the year before. I saw the dividends that paid off there. I went to the GCC conference, and we had, we filled an entire all-rowway classes. We were one of the bigger teams there. Numbers are really down in wrestling as well. So that helped us out. Track was competitive in some events. We're looking to host a middle school, once everything's done down there. We'd like to host something at the middle school level. And I talked to a local A D, said, "You host one, and believe me, you'll have somebody there," because it's hard to find middle school events. We will do that. Scheduled some smaller schools, as I said, some local schools, to help us with getting some confidence. Winning is important, early success is very important. We organized physicals for the athletes during the school day at the end of the year, had Dr. Bennett come in. That was a big deal, because it got, it did get participation numbers up, because every year, we start with athletes who, number one, can't afford. So if there was an issue with money, Dr. Bennett was very wonderful in saying, "Don't worry about it, okay? We'll just keep that under the table, then not pay 20 bucks." We made it affordable, and we saw more than 50 athletes that came during the day, during the school year, to get these physicals. I know for a fact that there are several students in our system that would not have played in a fall sport if we didn't do that. We work with students regarding grades, charted the grades, eligibility, constantly looked at that. Tracked with and contacted parents and coaches, as well as talked with teachers, keeping kids eligible, sitting with kids every day at lunch. When I can get to lunch periods, I sit with them, and I know that helps participation numbers. Because you build those relationships with people, and they'll come out. And I don't sit there and just promote one sport. We promote them all. So maybe cross-country is a little bit better, because we did signup sheets the whole time at lunchtime. I would say we do signup sheets for every sport. So maybe that's, maybe that's why we have a few more. And then as far as camps and stuff, we did our camp before school let out. We bussed, we worked with bussing. We got our kids there. This is an experiment, trying to get our kids together at one location. If we had bussing, we may have more. I anticipated at least 45 eighth-grade football players and about 35 seventh-grade. So when we start school, we will have students who probably want to come out. So when we start school, we will have students who probably want to come out and play. And we will be happy to accept them at the middle school level, but they'll be far behind.
Is there, excuse me, is there something set up where the, if a seventh grader is playing at Eastern Heights and they're practicing at Northwood, transportation to get them there?
Yes.
Okay.
To answer that question, we have set up with first student a bus that will go to the other two middle schools and drop at Northwood for their practices. And then on the days that they are able to get on the field at the stadium, we will bus them up there as well.
Yeah, and then bussing in the summer, right now, looks as if people could get there. Most of the time, practice was around in the evening at 5:30, 5:30. But in the future, I don't know, if maybe we offer transportation, we may get more athletes there. That's what I was referring to. And then as far as connecting to the youth program, we did a lot with that. I've done a lot with that, and I know that our other coaches, the ones that have, they're seeing a payoff. Some things I would propose, watching some of the struggles we saw, and this is my opinion, purely on what I've seen. Some of our struggling programs may need to join together because we can't support it. And it may be a logistical issue, but to rebuild some of our programs, we may need to do that. And I'll give you an example. We will be, we're fairly strong in the boys' basketball program at several schools. But our eighth grade at Eastern Heights wasn't competitive at all. And in a tournament game against Strongsville, their coach was very unsportsmanlike in the way he handled himself, and ran a score up on our kids horribly. And we had meetings about it at the AD meeting and principals' meeting, and he's not returning there, because the way he treated our kids, it was horrible. Well, in that situation, we may need to look at something to join and go to two teams and not have our talent completely spread. And it's just an example. Again, it's my opinion, because I watch some stuff within our sports, our football and our basketball, where kids are not going to come back to play. Why would you? If you don't have early success in education, and we don't intervene, chances for success are less likely when you get older. And it's the same with sports. And if we want our numbers to grow, we may have to do that. I'd like to see, I mean, I'm working on some things, but develop our programs in our district. As I said, we may not have the situation where all students can afford to play AAU, can afford to play multiple paid sports. Baseball's $1,500 to $2,500 a year, depending on where you go. It's very expensive. We don't have that opportunity. So we try to get some things going, and I will continue to look at things. And I have some ideas, but I'd like to see us try to do something in-house where we can get kids to participate even more, even more with the city or whatever. And then, lastly, this is something I feel, I feel it's important. When I started meeting with ADs, Strongsville, because they're one school, Evergreen and White Team, they, at first, they didn't want to play each other. And it's my opinion that we shouldn't. I can get games with local schools that would help build our confidence, because the only teams we beat are each other. And I think it's divisive. I think we should move forward and not be playing each other anymore, and stay away from that, because we're Alaria. And though we are three buildings, I'd like to see us have that mentality. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Arnold, you had mentioned that when you took over as football coach, one of the things that you did, or had started to do, was teaching the same concepts at the middle school level with now the seventh and eighth grade teams. And it sounds like your coaches are running what you're running. Are we doing that in other sports? Do we have, does the head coach have control over what the middle school coaches are doing? Because I've heard that for 20 years.
Right.
That our high school coaches don't really have control over what the junior high or middle school coaches are running, let alone who the junior high coaches are. And I realize there may be some contractual union issues in there, but are we doing that with other sports?
I would say, yeah.
I think it's getting better.
It's getting better.
I would say, Brett's really hands-on with getting involved with his coaches, and Jen is as well. I mean, that's what I'm seeing now. I mean, that was always a problem when I was here in '95, '96. There were three systems running football, and we could never kind of get people on board. And when a coach was there for 30 years, he would be like, "Well, you know, we'll do this for six years, and then you'll be gone, so I'm just doing my own thing anyways." So it really, it's really conducive to developing the athlete within a system, for sure. But, yeah, so I mean, I think so.
A question. So is middle school football the only sport at the middle school that's combined as of now, cross-country and football?
Wrestling. Yeah, wrestling. A year before, we did wrestling, and that's worked out well.
Okay.
Cross-country is?
Cross-country is still separate, but they go as one unit.
Why is that?
Well, because... Well, we never joined them together, as far as that's concerned, but we joined them together in regards to sending them on one bus. So we're going to have them run as a, or as a unified, as a unit into our open door meet. So there'll be a boys' and a girls' unit. But it's probably something that, you know, you have to look into, because we were sending eight athletes to Strongsville, eight athletes, and it's boys and girls. So it really doesn't make a lot of sense. So we'd be stronger, same with track and other things, we would be stronger if we unified some things. Something to definitely look at.
I'm going to go off the reservation here and call something that I'm good at, and ask somebody that doesn't know I'm going to ask this question, but I see Mr. Bezinski here, and is one of our middle school principals. Are you seeing a difference at Northwood? But it wouldn't have been as fun.
I am helping out to have the football teams at my buildings. And yes, I am. One, we are a lot more competitive. Football minds, kids are excited to be there. And like Coach said, you know, success breeds more success, breeds confidence. And we're seeing that now. Even though our seventh grade lost, the first two, they're getting better, and that's what we look forward to. Are you better than you were last year? And so we are, yes.
Do we have any other middle school?
Yeah, Dr. Benato's back there. Maybe she could...
There you go.
She's hiding back there.
Would you mind weighing in?
I agree with what Mr. Bezinski said. I don't see a lot of it, because it's not at Eastern Heights and practices and everything. Overall, the athletes are more excited to play. They seem more upbeat on, you know, going to practice, and even intermingling with the other two schools. It's, we're still working so hard to get away from, on the east side, on the north side, all of Alaria, and that's what our goal is. I think this is, you know, one big step towards beating them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, I was just wondering, does it, so we have some sports we combine and some sports we don't. Like for boys' basketball, is Eastern Heights the pioneer still, or how does that work? It wasn't when I, they're all the pioneers? Does it make sense to start considering combining more sports, or?
What I propose is that that is, that's potential, I think that it is. Because if we would have taken and created two teams at the eighth grade level due to, you know, something in that situation where you're getting killed, and it's just, it's not always like a fix-all. It could be just for that class, because talent varies. But in a situation where you're trying to build your numbers, kids aren't going to come out and get their head beat in.
Sure.
They just don't want to do it. And I wouldn't either, because you get that somewhere else.
How are the basketball, since, take basketball, for example, that's a pretty successful sport. How are the basketball numbers for the boys, per middle school? You haven't cut kids?
Usually, their numbers, no, their numbers are pretty good. I mean, they're going to have about 12 eighth graders at each level. I mean, that's one sport that it's easier to get boys out to play, I think, because it's a social sport as well. It's very, you know, the kids hang out, and they do things together with basketball. That's my honest opinion about that. And a lot of people would say that. So numbers there aren't too bad. But you've got to remember now, Brett's been doing this for a long time, and he gets kids out. And that's important. It takes three to five years to establish a program, because it has to start in the middle school and below. And once you do that, then you start to reap the benefits later at the high school level. So Brett's been doing that for a while. Now, sometimes, like last year, that one team, and Northwood, eighth and seventh, just were not very good. And in times like that, I mean, it's something to look at. And again, it might be just a moment-to-moment, year-to-year basis, but it is something to consider. With our girls' basketball, we really struggle. And we need to look at, like Westwood had an issue with losing one team, and we, it's hard, and also it's very difficult to get coaches today. A lot of people don't want to coach anymore, and they don't want the headaches. So it's very difficult to get people at the middle school to coach, let alone varsity. So it's something to look into, because we may have to offer, if somebody doesn't have a team somewhere, that, like wrestling, that we put them together, like she did the year before, and it worked. And it's made them better. They're more competitive, and they go into events, and they're competitive because of it. Otherwise, you know, you have three-way classes filled in one school, four here, and you just lose miserably.
Well, I think it's very encouraging. I do remember, my daughter Abigail went to Eastern Heights in seventh grade, and came home and said she's going to play basketball. She knew nothing about basketball. And then I find out she's starting, and her first game against Strongsville, they couldn't even get the ball over half-court for the whole entire first half. They were trapping them and just running up the score, and it was just miserable. So, I mean, when a kid has to go through that, why even do it?
Is that why she switched to volleyball?
This is, she did play volleyball. This is a very encouraging idea. I like the thought you guys have here.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Beck, Coach Arnold.
Thank you, Coach.
Appreciate your thoroughness.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Moving on, visitors' comments. This evening, we had nobody sign up, so we'll be moving on to the meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the board meeting minutes of August 15, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstoffen, discussion. Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Treasurer, action items.
We only have one item this evening, and that is recommending to acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the gifts and donations as listed in your agenda.
I see that there is a very significant one in there. Do you want to talk about that second one?
That's an anonymous one. It was donated to benefit the Link Crew at the high school. Did you want to say any more about it?
A longtime Alaria came to visit me and wanted to do something to set up for mentoring. That seemed like the logical place to put it, so Amanda Belcher accepted very happily that money. But it is a, he did not want to be known, but great, great person.
Thank you. And I believe there, you told me in our meeting last week that their annual budget is only about $5,000 or $6,000.
Usually about $5,000.
So that's a significant...
And they were struggling to get that, so this is awesome.
Very good. Thank you. Significant one like that, I wanted to bring that out. So is there any other discussion? Let me get a motion on the floor to approve the items recommended by the treasurer.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Any other discussions or questions? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Ms. Kligger, any other items from the treasurer's office?
No, Mr. President, I don't have anything.
Anything from the sports complex? Aye.
No. I sent the budget updates out to everyone, and hopefully you understood them, and that's where we're at.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Jama, superintendent action items.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under superintendent action items for the board's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the contract with PSI Affiliates Incorporated, PSI Associates Incorporated, with St. Jude for the 18-19 school year as detailed in enclosure K1. Item number two, to authorize the student transportation contract between the Alaria City School District, Board of Education, and Educational Alternatives to provide daily door-to-door special education transportation for non-education alternative students throughout the 18-19 school year as detailed in enclosure K2. Item number three, to authorize the student transportation contract between the Alaria City School District and the Board of Education and Educational Alternatives to provide daily door-to-door special education transportation throughout the 2018-2019 school year as detailed in enclosure K3. Item number four, to approve the Educational Service Center of Loring County ESCLC service agreement for the ESCLC to provide part-time psychologists for the 18-19 school year as detailed in enclosure K4. Item number five, to approve the overnight field trip for Alaria High School orchestra and choir students to go to Washington, D.C., February 28 through March 3, 2019, as detailed in enclosure K5. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Beck, second, by Ms. Karstoffen. Any discussion, questions? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Dr. Jama, personnel action items.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations to the Board of Education under personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent. Item number one, to approve the resignation of the certified staff as detailed below. Item number two, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below. Amber Gignett, long-term sub-grade one teacher Franklin Elementary School. Caitlin Kelleher, intervention specialist, Elee Elementary School. Natalie Clouse, long-term substitute teacher kindergarten at Crestwood Elementary. Chelseaa Luli, long-term intervention specialist, Oakwood. Tracy Namick, school counselor, Pioneer Academy and Early College. Kristen Urbannick, long-term substitute intervention specialist, Eastern Heights Middle School. And there is also a list of substitute teachers, as well as ELL tutors and auxiliary staff listed below. Item number three, to approve the unpaid leave absence of the following certified staff member as detailed below. Item number four, to approve the appointment of Abigail Frasher, parent coordinator, and Demetria Korn, parent engagement coordinator, to be funded by the school improvement grant by the 18-19 school year at $20 per hour. Item number five, to approve the supplemental contracts of the following certified staff members as detailed below. Item number six, to approve an increase to $125 per day for substitute positions located at Franklin Elementary School or work in the ED unit throughout the district. So again, it's for Franklin Elementary School and then the ED units throughout the district. Item number seven, to approve the following game workers for the athletic service as detailed below. Item number eight, retirement of classified staff, to approve the retirement of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Linda M. Brown, utility at Westwood. We wish her the best of luck as she starts a new chapter in her life. Item number nine, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number 10, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members as detailed below. Item number 11, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following classified staff members as detailed below. And item number 12, to approve the payment of monthly stipend of $600 for flat-rate mileage allowance to Jacob Carney in lieu of payment of IRS mileage reimbursement, rate effective August 1, 2018. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel action.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel items as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beck. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Dr. Jama, do we have any of the new folks here tonight?
Absolutely do. Mr. Brubaker, I'd like to turn it over to Jamie, who will take control of this part of the meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have several of our certified staff members here that I would like to interview. Amber Gignett, she's going to be a long-term sub-grade one at Franklin Elementary School.
Take 10 minutes.
Caitlin Kelleher, intervention specialist at Elee. Natalie Clouse, long-term sub-kindergarten teacher, Crestwood. Chelsea Luli. Tracy Namick, she is our school counselor, Pioneer Academy, Early College. And Kristen Urbannick. We also have Carmen Luftiel, she is the ELL tutor. And we have a couple classified staff that are here as well. And we have a couple classified staff that are here as well. Isabel Thomas, she's going to be a special education para. And Deborah Powers, she is going to be an instructional para, Oakwood. Welcome to the Pioneer family.
Great, thank you. On behalf of the board, welcome to all of you, to the Pioneer family, as Jamie said, and we look forward to great things out of you. Dr. Jama, personnel action items.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I do have one item under other personnel items as recommended by the superintendent and that is to approve the appointment of the following certified staff member as detailed below. Nancy Gebhardt, ELL tutor.
This ought to be fun. Do I have a motion?
Okay. All right.
We do have executive session after this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve -- Ms. Gebhardt?
A motion by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstoff. Do I have any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffin?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Abstain.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Superintendent report, Dr. Jama?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. Just a couple of things I would like to bring up. First of all, Lisa Roverson, who has been a longtime reporter for The Chronicle Telegram and worked very closely with me and the Aliria City School District, will be moving on to another chapter in her life as she takes on a managerial role in Medina. And she will be leaving the Chronicle Telegram Aliria as we know her as our current reporter. But over the years, I've become very close with her and her kids. And in fact, it was about seven, eight years ago that her and I sat down and talked about, "Why aren't your kids coming to the Aliria City Schools?" And next thing I know, they were coming to the Aliria City Schools and being so, so successful. But Lisa, you're going to be missed. You were a true asset to the Chronicle and a true asset to our district.
I still live here. School starts tomorrow. It goes to Westwood.
Did anybody hear the weather yet? Tomorrow sounds good then, right?
We hope it starts.
A couple other things I would like to say. Opening day, kudos to Aunt Schloss and her department for bringing in Manny Scott. As you know, Mr. Backs, you were next to me at the presentation that he put on. He is a life-changing figure and absolutely moves people out of their comfort zone and into a zone where they do what's best for kids and what's best for the community. And kudos to you, Ann, for bringing him back. And the overwhelming emails and phone calls and just talking to staff have been, again, they couldn't see how it could get any better than it did last year, from last year, but this year he even cranked it up and sent another message about what is best for our kids in Aliria and how we get there. So thank you. Mr. Backs, did you want to say anything about?
No, I did -- I really enjoyed that presentation and it was -- I was amazed at how quiet it was in that auditorium. And I mean, that says a lot, that says a lot for Manny. And so, yeah, thank you, thank you, Ann. It was great. I really enjoyed it.
I'd like to thank all the administrators who came out tonight to be here and be supportive of our new partnership with Mercy Health Centers. It's an exciting venture that we are joining together. And as you heard Mr. Oley say and myself, we are going to move forward with things that are going to knock the socks off of people in this community with what we're going to do for kids as a partnership. So I'm very excited about that as well. And then finally, this Saturday, I will be doing the master of ceremonies at the Save Our Children's Ball again at Loring College and I look forward to that evening. It's a wonderful event that does a great deal of work for our students in the Aliria City School District. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Any questions for the superintendent? Moving on, Board of Education. Board policy, second reading and adoption, recommended action to approve the second reading and adoption of the following board policy, the organizational chart. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstoff in discussion. Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffin?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is the exciting part, is I'll need a motion to request an executive session as authorized on Ohio Revised Code, ORC Section 121.22.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, to discuss personnel matter?
To discuss the employment of a public employee.
To discuss employment of a public employee with no action to follow. Do I have a motion? By Mr. Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Karstoff in discussion. Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffin?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. If you want to stick around for when we're done, you're more than welcome to. There's cake and punch over there.